Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Wednesday, May 31, 2023. Will the Clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Six Members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing if you're able for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Sumoed.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's amended. And our next order of business is proclamations, and we have a few to be presented and two to be read into the record. And we'll begin with Councilman Kraus, Pride Month, and myself. We're both presenting.
Yep, we're doing this together.
Everyone for Pride, please come forward.
Good morning. Thank you. As the Council President said, we are sharing the proclamation to recognize Pride Month. I just have a, maybe a couple of comments to make before I actually read the proclamation. I've said this before, I really lived a very blessed life, and I had the good fortune to come out in 1972, so you do the math and you'll know how old I really am. But it sort of coincides with the 50th anniversary of Pride here in the city, which is a monumental moment to celebrate. You'll hear a little bit more about the first Pride that took place in 1973, but in all the years that I have had the privilege to live my life open and free and, you know, unencumbered as a gay man, I don't ever remember such a difficult time to be a member of our community. And I'm hard-pressed to really think of a time when there has been such an organized and orchestrated and malicious attempt to demean and to demean what it means to be a member of our community. And these are from organized and orchestrated political religious forces that I truly thought we had gotten through. I thought those times were behind us, but somehow it has become acceptable in this culture, in this society, to invoke or perpetrate violence, whether that violence be physical, spiritual, mental, emotional, on certain peoples that we deem, you know, unworthy to be part of our society, you know? So coming up with Pride, you know, here, you know, to celebrate all the positive things, I've really had to do some real, very deep soul-searching about what this moment is and what we should be recognizing about Pride right now. And if I can hope for anything, I would hope it would be that we could leave behind the noise and the negativity of, you know, the chatter that is out there, regardless of what platform is espousing this almost swore craziness. And that we take this moment to celebrate Pride for what Pride is. You know, it is a time for us to stop and sort of take like what I like to call an inventory of who we are and what we do and how we contribute to the world and a time to acknowledge our love of ourselves, our love of one another, our community, and all of the wonderment that we have contributed throughout the history of mankind to this planet. And so my greatest hope would be that we take the time to just ban the noise and ban the chatter and let Pride be what Pride is, a moment for us to gather, be together, to recognize one another, to take to the streets, to laugh, to dance, to sing, to celebrate, to recognize who and what we are and all that God intends for us to be and to become. And so that's my hope for Pride. And in that spirit, I would like to offer up the Council's official recognition of Pride, along with Mayor Ganey here. Maria's here to represent and speak for the mayor. And we'll take this moment and time to put the noise behind us. And, you know, I like to say, no one can take anything from us that we don't willingly surrender. And by buying into the chatter and the noise, we surrender our power. And this is not the time to surrender our power. This is the time to recognize our power, to embrace it and to celebrate it. And that's my hope for Pride. So where, and again, with Madam President, she and I are sponsoring this proclamation together. Whereas LGBTQIA+ Pride Month is celebrated each year in the month of June to honor the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Greenwich Village. And whereas on June 17, 1973, Gay Alternatives Pittsburgh organized the very first Gay Pride and Gay Pride Walk events in Pittsburgh's history under the tagline "Gay Pittsburgh is coming out." And whereas now 50 years later, the Pittsburgh region is now home to more than 30 Pride activities, including 12 Pride community-level festivals and marches, the legacy of Pittsburgh Pride belongs to thousands of volunteers, vendors, performers, and thousands more who attend these events, big and small, never measuring Pride by population or participation. And whereas Black LGBTQI+ Pittsburghers are an integral force within Pittsburgh's, our community in Pittsburgh, celebrating and participating in the Wiley Avenue Day parades in the Hill District since the 1940s and founding the Pittsburgh Black Pride in 1995, which continues to advance its mission by empowering Black LGBTQIA+ communities to live safe and healthy lives, free of discrimination and racism. And whereas in July 2020, the City of Pittsburgh created the LGBTQIA+ Commission comprised of individuals from various institutions and communities who advocate for and represent the interests of our community. And whereas by celebrating the commission, the City of Pittsburgh will continue to be welcoming, a welcoming place for all persons of goodwill, regardless of age, color, disability, ethnicity, family or marital status, gender identity or expression, language, national origin, physical or mental ability, political affiliation, race, religion, orientation, and identity or socioeconomic status. To now therefore be it resolved that this Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate LGBTQIA+ Pride Month and the diversity of community events, parades, and activities for all. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize our community and declares the month of June 2023 to be Pride Month here in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
Second.
On favor?
On favor.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, one and all.
Yeah, I would like to just thank you, Councilman Kraus, for presenting the proclamation and for bringing a lot of awareness to the City of Pittsburgh around the LGBT community. You've done a tremendous job. But before I had you, I had my mother, who raised a gay brother and a gay priest, a brother who was a priest. I'm sorry, a brother who was a priest, not gay. But he became a bishop. And honest to goodness, she taught us to love both equally, no matter what was going on in our family. She taught us love, and she taught us how to respect people and treat people for people. And so for that, she did that back when she lived on Wiley Avenue, and she did it back when we lived on Fifth Avenue. And she just taught us and so many people around us to love people, to accept people, and to treat people the way you want to be treated. I remember one time she said to me, "Turn the other cheek, turn the other cheek." I said, "Mom, I only have two cheeks." And she's like, "Turn it." So, I mean, she just taught us to love people. And so I'm so thankful for people like her, who, she's 100, she's going to be 102 this summer. And I think it's because she's just so loving and so peaceful and just, she, this woman opened her doors during riots, the Martin Luther King riots, and people came in our house, both, we had protesters, we had police officers, we had firefighters, we had military people, and we had the rioters, because she knew everyone and loved everyone. They all sat down at her table and then walked outside and protested again. But that's the kind of person she was, and that's the kind of person I'm trying to raise my kids to be the same way. And they're teaching me new things too every day. So I just want to thank people for people like her, like you, and like Sue, who take the time to, and Maria, who take the time, all of you, to take the time to teach us to be and remind us that God is love and that there's a lot of love in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Maria, would you please come up and share?
Thank you, Council President, and for, Councilman Kraus, for inviting us here today to celebrate Pride Month in the City of Pittsburgh. My name's Maria Montano. I'm the Communications Director for the City of Pittsburgh and for Mayor Ed Ganey. And I'm also a proud transgender woman. And it's remarkable to me that 50 years after the first Pride parade in the City of Pittsburgh, that for the first time in our city's history, that the spokeswoman for the city is a member of the LGBTQI+ community. And I want everyone to know, who might be watching, who's here with us today, that trans joy is welcome in the City of Pittsburgh, that your love is welcome in the City of Pittsburgh, that our community is welcome in the City of Pittsburgh. And we are committed to doing all that we can to embrace that joy, to embrace your love, to celebrate you, to support you, because every member of our community deserves to live a life of dignity, of respect, of loyalty, of love and joy, and to have that be celebrated. And I understand that right now, it's that joy, our joy, that is causing people to pass legislation that wishes to harm us, because they want to take our joy away. And it doesn't matter how many bills are passed, what legislation happens, how much you try to harm us or stop us from marching, we're not going to stop. We're going to keep being joyful, because that is what we do, that is what we will continue to do. And here in Pittsburgh, we welcome you to join us in Pride March and Pride festivities all month long to celebrate your joy, because we love you here, you're welcome here, and you're celebrated here. And on behalf of the mayor and the entire city, I just want to say thank you for making this happen, for your work and your dedication over decades to make Pittsburgh a place where someone like me can stand behind podiums and with the mayor and speak on behalf of a city. And I fully recognize that it's because of the work of the people who came before me that I have the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Su Kar, and I am one of the co-chairs of the Pittsburgh LGBTQIA+ Commission. We worked with City Council and the mayor's office to draft the language for the proclamation. This is a proclamation for the entire community, for the LGBTQIA+ community, and for our allies and our neighbors. We think it's very important to acknowledge just how incredibly broad Pride looks nowadays, you know, how far we've come from 50 years ago, when people marched from Point Park up to, where did they go? To Fifth Avenue. Okay. To wherever they stopped. They didn't stop. Here they are today, right now, in City Council. And it's really important that we recognize too, just the idea that we have a vibrant LGBTQIA+ Commission within the city government. And we are a very active group, and we're a very insistent group on advocating for the things that we feel strongly about. And I'm just really pleased that this is one of our actions this year. I want to just, sorry, I lost track what I was saying. Pittsburgh is now closer to reality, where all young people are recognized for who they are, are appreciated and validated, and are protected. But we still have a long way to go. The thing that's important is that we focus on protecting our young people, because that's who spoke up in 1969, who were in the parades in Wiley Avenue in the 40s. They took the risks, and our young people today are still taking risks. It's a risk to go into Target as a trans person. That's just mind-blowing. So it's on us to do everything we can to protect trans youth, to protect all LGBTQIA youth, and to remember to do that every day as we walk through our celebrations and our tragedies. Thank you very much, and I hope that you will all join us at a future commission meeting. Thank you.
My name is Richard Parsakian. I'm a member of the LGBTQI+ Commission also. I am going to speak very short and sweet, hopefully very sweet, to honor friends through our history. My friend Danny Garvin, it becomes very emotional, who was a homeless youth in New York who was at Stonewall. He was one of the historians of the Stonewall riot, and he was always there to talk about what happened that day, and that, actually, those few days. He passed away a few years ago. I met him when I was visiting friends in New York. So it was sort of like, to be in the presence of that history, it was very profound. I would also like to honor the mother who came into my store, who said to me, "I hear this is a safe space to bring my trans son to shop." So I honor those friends that understand that I've created a safe space. I think we need to have those safe spaces for our children and adults who are exploring their gender identity and have no judgment. And I'm very proud to be able to do that. I also want to honor the drag community. I've been, not fighting, but I've been aware of the Pittsburgh struggle for over 50 years. I've been very involved. In the AIDS crisis, when that was happening in the 80s, our drag community unselfishly raised money for all of our AIDS organizations. They were there before this loud chatter of what are, why should they exist? I know why they exist, because I understand their history. So we need to remember that history matters. I also want to honor all of my creative friends in Pittsburgh that are using their platform of the arts to create change. I had a really good friend who was here on Sunday, Billy Porter, who has uplifted our voice in the most beautiful way. He understands why we exist and why change is important and why we need to keep the struggle going. And so I have so many friends to honor. So thank you very much. And thank you, everyone here who has made this possible. Thank you.
Maria? Yes. Would you like to, you just look like you're dying to say something, Councilman. If you're, you're welcome to make comments. Are you sure any members wish to make comment? You're welcome to do so. If not, would you come up for the picture? Thank you.
Can I say something about your brother?
After, you can. It's okay.
I just want to say, Reverend Burgess, just mention about your brother, because he should at least be mentioned.
I just had a doctor brother that was, who died of AIDS and was in a relationship with a trans male years, years ago, which has, although I talk about it very, very infrequently, that's really my entree into advocacy for the AIDS community and for those who may be different.
Yeah, I guess Maria, which is...
Is Melvin here from Mayor Ganey's office? Oh, Mayor Ganey's office, Melvin? Do you want to come forward for the proclamation for SNAP? And everyone here for SNAP, please come forward. Shelley Danko Day, you better come forward. You can come up here. We're doing this proclamation with Mayor Ganey's office and Brother Melvin. Melvin, you want to read it? Thank you all for your work, but we'll talk about that in a minute. You want to read the proclamation?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Well, good morning, Council and members. How is everybody feeling this morning? How are you feeling this morning? Just checking, we have some folks in the room here, that's all. It is an honor to have an opportunity to bring this bridge that is very important to our city, to our neighborhoods, to our families, and to present this proclamation on behalf of the mayor's office and City Council. Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Recognizing SNAP, Community Outreach, Wednesday, May 31, 2023. Whereas it's estimated that over 60,000 of Pittsburgh residents experience food insecurity regularly, meaning that one in five residents or one in three brown residents struggle to have affordable, nutritionally beneficial, and culturally appropriate food to live a healthy, active life. The Feed Pittsburgh Report outlines food insecurity within the city and identifies 23 healthy poverty areas for policy and action. Whereas US Census data estimates that over 16,000 residents in the city are living below the poverty level and not receiving SNAP benefits. Whereas Feeding America estimates that one in six children in the greater Pittsburgh area face hunger today over a one in nine individuals. And whereas food assistance programs like Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program SNAP are the first line of defense in fighting food insecurity through proven methods that uplift families out of poverty and directly put them into the local economy. Whereas the City of Pittsburgh, along with partners from Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, JustHarvest, the Food Trust, Jewish Family and Community Services, United Way of Western Pennsylvania, North Hills Community Outreach, Allegheny County Department of Human Services, Castle San Jose, OPDC, Three Rivers Youth, CMU Center for Data Science and Public Policy, the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, City Parks, Healthy Active Living Centers, the City's 311 Call Center, and the Office of Community Health and Safety have collaborated on campaigns to increase SNAP enrollment here in the City of Pittsburgh. Whereas many marks, many may marks the first of our local farmers' market season, and through JustHarvest's Food Access Program, residents can use SNAP benefits at farmers' markets throughout the city. Now therefore, Ed Ganey, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, and President of Council do hereby proclaim, May 31, 2023, a SNAP Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Congratulations to all who involved with this outstanding program here in the city.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Okay. Thank you. And I just want to thank Melvin. I also want to mention Melvin, Brother Melvin, I don't know if you talked about this publicly, but Melvin just raised a lot of money to send the All-City Band to Washington DC to participate. And so I want to thank you for that, because that was definitely your leadership and your initiative to send a lot of kids to something positive this weekend, so thank you. And with that said, I want to thank all of you for your work in terms of the food hunger groups and working across the city of Pittsburgh. But I have to recognize Shelley Danko Day again. She does tremendous work quietly in the City of Pittsburgh, and I think if we let her go and do what she knows how to do, there won't be a hungry person left in the City of Pittsburgh. I just want to say that. She's done amazing work with, in our area, with Farmer Girl Eb, who a lot of people know, was a girl who I met. She was doing some gardening in her house, or in her yard, and some other places, and she wanted to sell produce. And so I gave her a corner lot that I had some, you know, privilege of assigning people to. And so she worked at that lot, selling her produce. Somebody saw it on Facebook. Kristi Porter saw it at her center, hired her to do food for about 400 people, and just continued to help her build her business. Then she ended up, somebody saw that, they gave her a storefront, or not gave her a storefront, worked with her to get a storefront in the West End. She has a storefront, she's growing. Shelley Danko Day knew she needed more space, got two lots, two or three lots it was, cleaned out, ready for her to go. She's teaching kids how to garden across the city of Pittsburgh. She wrote a book, Teaching Kids How to Garden. And she's just an amazing person, but a lot of that would not have happened had it not been for Shelley Danko Day and her, I mean, tenacity, if she just continued to drive home what needed to happen with her. And so I just want to thank you for that. And who?
Can I say a few words?
Yeah, we're going to let you all say a few words. So go ahead, starting with Shelley.
Thank you, everybody, for this proclamation. We're all really excited, and I'm so excited about all of our partners here, and I'm so glad, excited to hear from them all, at least introduce themselves. But, you know, air, water, and food are the three things that people need to survive. Like you'll, we need housing, we need clothes, we need other things, but like, literally you'll die within minutes without air, within days without water, and within weeks without food. Those are like absolutes. Humans cannot survive. And food is not a right. It hasn't been declared a right in this country, and we're one of only two countries who have not declared it a right. And people are judged for their inability to feed themselves. The supplemental nutrition and, program, the SNAP program, what is that, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, sorry. I might be a little nervous, maybe. But the SNAP program gives people money to allow them a little bit more freedom in their budget, so they can pay other bills and buy more food and do what they need to do in their lives to survive. When people are living in survival, it's hard to think outside of that bubble of survival. And the SNAP program gives people money for that, and it also brings money into our economy. So there's not a lot the government can do directly about this, but we have partners that we work with, and this is what we need to do. And we need more of these coordinations within the city to help us to lift up programs and initiatives that are happening around the city to make people feel more safe and secure, and by providing them food, that's one of those ways. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Well, at least, if you're not going to say a few words, at least get up and introduce yourself, so people know who you are and what you represent. Okay? Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Ann Sanders. I work at Just Harvest. I am our, I had a job title recently, let me see if I remember my job title, Director of Public Benefits Policy and Programs. That's it, it's a mouthful. Anyway. So I manage our SNAP outreach team, who work day in and day out, helping people apply for SNAP benefits. I also work with Amanda Sloan. Amanda, do you want to come up here? Who is our Fresh Access Coordinator. She makes all the magic happen at the farmers' markets, so we can accept SNAP benefits at the City Parks Farmers Markets. And to... make sure that everybody has what they need. Thank you.
Hi, friends. Tom Baker, back second time in eight days, good to be back with you. But as a kid from Greenfield, it's always an honor to be here. So I'm the Executive Director of North Hills Community Outreach. I'm here with my colleague Michaela Fogel. We're the largest social services agency in northern Allegheny County, serving 40 zip codes in 50 communities. Thousands of families receive tens of thousands of services through NHCO every year, and we couldn't do what we do without amazing partners like all of these kind folks here with us today. So we're just proud to be part of this movement and making sure that people are receiving the physiological needs, right? Air, water, food, all the basic Maslow's hierarchy of needs, things that we need as humans. That's what we're all about at NHCO, and we couldn't do it without fine partners like all of these good folks here. So thank you for honoring the group today.
And I'm just going to add that you were our county councilman. So you're still honorable, Tom Baker.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. I'm Sol Morde from the Food Trust, the program manager for Pittsburgh. And the Food Trust, together with almost everybody in this group, provides food bucks or a nutrition incentive to anybody that is using SNAP at almost all farmers' markets, corner stores like Farmer Girl Eb, and a lot of other community stores and groceries. So people enrolled in SNAP can just purchase eligible items and earn more food bucks than they can spend on fruits and vegetables. This is, this is a resource that's out there, no enrollment needed. If you're already a SNAP user, you can go ahead and stretch your food budget. So thank you so much for everybody that made this date possible.
Hi, friends. Tom Baker, back second time in eight days, good to be back with you. But as a kid from Greenfield, it's always an honor to be here. So I'm the Executive Director of North Hills Community Outreach. I'm here with my colleague Michaela Fogel. We're the largest social services agency in northern Allegheny County, serving 40 zip codes in 50 communities. Thousands of families receive tens of thousands of services through NHCO every year, and we couldn't do what we do without amazing partners like all of these kind folks here with us today. So we're just proud to be part of this movement and making sure that people are receiving the physiological needs, right? Air, water, food, all the basic Maslow's hierarchy of needs, things that we need as humans. That's what we're all about at NHCO, and we couldn't do it without fine partners like all of these good folks here. So thank you for honoring the group today.
And I'm just going to add that you were our county councilman. So you're still honorable, Tom Baker. Thank you.
Hello, good morning. I'm Sol Morde from the Food Trust, the program manager for Pittsburgh. And the Food Trust, together with almost everybody in this group, provides food bucks or a nutrition incentive to anybody that is using SNAP at almost all farmers' markets, corner stores like Farmer Girl Eb, and a lot of other community stores and groceries. So people enrolled in SNAP can just purchase eligible items and earn more food bucks than they can spend on fruits and vegetables. This is, this is a resource that's out there, no enrollment needed. If you're already a SNAP user, you can go ahead and stretch your food budget. So thank you so much for everybody that made this date possible.
Hi, I'm Teresa Rogers from JFC Square Hill Food Pantry, and I just want to say thank you for everyone who had a hand in this, and thank you for everyone who helps prevent hunger.
Come on.
Hello, everybody. I'm Sally Elway, and Director of Meeting Basic Needs at the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania. I oversee all of our program investments in basic needs, including, of course, food, housing, transportation, safety, and social isolation. I just want to thank Shelley for including the United Way as part of this convening, and thanks to the mayor's office for recognizing the importance of SNAP to so many of our community members and neighbors. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Did we get everyone working on the stage? Everyone here? Okay. And I just want to thank city council, because this city council is constantly supportive of the programs and the initiatives that you take, and they're grateful for the work that you do. But I want to acknowledge that there's a lot of people in council that are very supportive and always speaking and advocating on your behalf. So thank you to council members. Everyone want to come up for the photo?
I just want to take this opportunity to send out a boatload, an abundance of gratitude and love to city council for the generous support you gave to the One Band One Sound Project. We took 63 students from Brashear, Miss Cogdale, Brashear, Alderice, and Obama, and they marched and represented the city in the National Memorial Day Parade over the weekend, did a fabulous job, did outstanding job. And your contribution to this effort made it possible. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, I really mean that sincerely. Thanks again.
Okay. And now we have Councilman Lavelle, LGA Partners. Do you want to call them forward?
All those with LGA Partners, would please come forward. Just wanted to take a brief moment to recognize an architectural firm, woman-owned, that has gone from one to, I believe, over 75 employees, and wonderfully is going to be moving into downtown Pittsburgh. As we're looking to all rebound, we need to be able to support businesses that are coming back into our core. Whereas LGA Partners, a woman-led architectural firm founded in 1993 by Susan Lammy, is that right? And succeeded Paulette Burns, will be celebrating its 30th anniversary. And whereas initially started as a homegrown endeavor in its attic in Edgewood, LGA Partners has grown since to grow to over 75 members that will be moving to 20,000 square feet space in Gateway Center in the fall of 2023. Whereas LGA is committed to design that is rigorously considered technically innovative and responsive to context and precedent, a disciplined process that guarantees successful project outcomes. And whereas staying true to their motto of design that works, LGA Partners has overseen some of the region's most significant projects, including the new headquarters for GNC and Aura Innovations, restacking the historic Cathedral of Learning at the University of Pittsburgh, reimagining the concept of affordable housing at Hawkins Village, highlighting the Black and Gold Steelers Pro Shop at Aqua Shore Stadium, and re-envisioning the passenger experience at the Pittsburgh International Airport. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 31, 2023 to be LGA Partners Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Give a motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved, congratulations. Thank you.
Just want to thank everybody for having us here today. I'm Paulette Burns, President and Managing Partner at LGA. Short and sweet, but we're really honored about our 30 years here in Pittsburgh. As architects, it's, this is really about building, designing and building a better Pittsburgh for all of us. So just want to thank you for having us. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you for moving into town. And Madam Clerk, we have two proclamations to be read into the record.
Councilwoman Warwick presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 30, 2023 to be Yeshiva Schools Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Coghill presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare June 2, 2023 to be Brashear GSA Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can you have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved, congratulations. Thank you.
Just want to thank everybody for having us here today. I'm Paulette Burns, President and Managing Partner at LGA. Short and sweet, but we're really honored about our 30 years here in Pittsburgh. As architects, it's, this is really about building, designing and building a better Pittsburgh for all of us. So just want to thank you for having us. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you for moving into town. And Madam Clerk, we have two proclamations to be read into the record.
Councilwoman Warwick presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 30, 2023 to be Yeshiva Schools Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Coghill presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare June 2, 2023 to be Brashear GSA Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can you have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved, thank you. And now we'll move on to our next story of business, which is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller, good morning.
I'm Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Squirrel Hill, Singapore. Nearly 2000, I became a member of the American Mathematical Society. This is the notices of the society. Global Intelligence Society, US National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligence社 society.org. A concern of this council was clearly pre-university athletes whom Mr. Ganey, Dr. Walters of the Pittsburgh Public Schools, and last time, Ms. Rustberger called scholar-athletes. A pre-university scholar, 10th through 12th grade in the United States must mean above basic proficiency in literacy and numeracy, and I'm going to focus on numeracy meaning math skills, which was absent from the episode three, in my view, of the Black Dynamite Ganey and Black Lightning Walters Show, 24 May 2023. Question one, are the boys WPIAL, girls city, boys city basketball champs, PPS-based sports athletes, also mathletes? I insist that the Pittsburgh Public Schools provide evidence. They have not. How many of the above are above basic? The champs, the sports champs, Singapore, Seoul, Shanghai, Tokyo, eighth graders. According to the program for international student assessment, it requires using an X-Y coordinate grid to come up with, to calculate the slope of a straight line using two points, x sub 1, y sub 1, and x sub 2, y sub 2, and to use laws of exponents, except for zero n is a number. So n to the exponent a times n to the exponent b equals n to a plus b. What is any n to the exponent zero? What's one? What is the square root of 25 minus 5 squared? Anybody? It's zero. I asked more than 10 of the men who were here for Take Father to School Day about these items, and they didn't know. How are they supposed to tutor their kids? Question two, who are the Pittsburgh pre-university champ mathletes? They are American kids of East Asian descent. So I and the Global Intelligence Society proclaim, 1 June 2023, to be Pre-University Asian Student Mathletes Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullin. Naomi Mullin? Is she online? Yes, she's online. Good morning, Naomi. Please unmute your mic. Naomi Mullin?
Okay, that was three tries. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. I am proud of my husband, who is a true Pittsburgh public servant, from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. We, the people of Bon Air, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, our taxes, and we voted. We showed up at the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the building. We have signed a petition to say we want a green space, not a building. We have a property value and a quality of life to protect. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Here's the situation. One, an excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. Four, it must be torn down. Five, parks and trees Pittsburgh funds used to make it into a green space. Six, the residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detrimental buildings? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? Michael J. Mullin Reflection. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullin touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire city, threw a fire by their first name, and was always approachable regardless of rank. If he had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly, but also energetically, his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike J. Mullin lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael, well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder, Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Join us, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative for the creation of a green space. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Ralph Williams. Ralph Williams is online. Good morning, Ralph Williams.
I am, Madam President. Thank you for having me on. I appreciate it. And I'm delighted I'm speaking today. I have several issues I want to talk about. Last October, I was, I spoke, and I spoke about what happened in my building here, which is owned by the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. And I spoke specifically to Reverend Burgess, because he's on the board of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. And I'm not real happy right now about some things that are still going on in here. My wife, again, was assaulted twice in this building. Neither tenant was a victim, okay? No one seems to want to evict any troublemakers that are in these buildings. I am urging that city council and the mayor step up and do something about the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. And I know you have a lot of other issues, like plastic bags and green spaces and other things like that, and, but you need to worry about this, because you have tenants living in the building that are good tenants, and you have a bunch of bad ones that are just running everybody ruckus in these buildings, and are not being evicted. I am proposing that the city's council and the mayor step up and fire Castro Binion and fire the executive staff down at Housing for not doing anything about anything. Right now, in this society today, we live in a nothing society. Nobody wants to do anything about anything. And I think it's pretty sad that this is the way this is going. Number two, I want to talk about PCTV, all right? And please, don't tell me you can't do anything about it. I heard a rumor from someone very close to PCTV that the city in the past has given almost half a million dollars to help PCTV. I spoke about that last year, because now they want to make community producers pay $50 an hour to put their programs on. I'm taking my programs off, because I'm not paying $50 an hour. The Comcast and Verizon has cut their funding down 30%, and the station's in trouble. Please help PCTV. It's a good entity for kids to learn media and get off the streets. It's also good for adults that want to put up- The Comcast and Verizon has cut their funding down 30% and the station's in trouble. Please help PCTV. It's a good entity for kids to learn media and get off the streets. It's also good for adults that want to put a program on there, that want to do something and it's economic, it was economical. Now they're trying to turn it into a Channel 11 or something. Please do something about this and do it quickly. And please, don't do nothing about nothing because that's what's going on right now. Thirdly, I want to talk about downtown Pittsburgh. It's a disgrace that downtown is the way it is. And you just had a business there that said they're putting their business downtown that Councilman Lavelle decided he wanted, that he's going to have them move downtown. You know what? I feel bad for you because of what's going on downtown that this council and the mayor are not doing anything about, all right? They're not letting police do their job again, all right? They're not letting them arrest people that should be arrested and people causing problems. You've got businesses moving out. I personally know someone who had to move their clothing store out of downtown because of all this mess. If you want to continue to have downtown be a ghost town, that's fine. You go ahead and do that. But you know what? You hired a new chief, you approved his hiring, and then you go ahead, and what happens next is you go ahead and then he's, he's...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ikhanahel Makina. She's not on. She's not on, so our next registered, or our last registered speaker is Puma Chakma Yahali Yi. On?
Hello, Keshala Ee, everyone. Congratulations to everyone who received acknowledgement today for the great work that they do in agriculture. Most of those people who have done this work do it unselfishly. And I will say that most of the people who do this work in the eastern end of the City of Pittsburgh, I have great relationships with, and I have also worked in these groups in these spaces and places, assisting black farmers and establishing great farm communities and as well as assisting other people who identify as white and other ethnic groups. I will say that as an aborigine of America and the first steward of America and the ones that taught everyone who came to our land how to do the very work that they're doing today, our voices are silenced. We are not a part of any conversation unless we interject ourselves. And when we interject ourselves, we still have pushback, and that is from everyone, from people who identify as black, from people who identify as white, not so much. And I'm going to be very honest. But there is still pushback in those arenas too as well. So hopefully, moving forward, as we present legislation to the City of Pittsburgh, to the city council, that you will reach deep back into your heart and into your mind and acknowledge that when your ancestors came here, they came with nothing. And that when they came with nothing, we opened our arms and our hands and we gave and we helped and we supported. And these colonies that were established, we helped people from starving because everyone was starving, because they knew nothing about our soil, nothing about our environment. And we taught everyone. I want everyone to be very clear on this, who is still in attendance. I'm on the phone, so I can't see who's there. And I will say this as well. Our voices are very strong and powerful voices for our ancestors, for we speak from the blood and the soil and the air and the water. That's what we speak from because this is our indigenous land. We're aborigines to this soil. We came from nowhere else. And everyone, folks today, came from somewhere else. Their ancestry is across the waters. Our ancestry is within these waters. So, moving forward, I will continue to do the good work that I do working with the different organizations. And when this Food Justice Fund is finally allocated to the people, do not forget about the aborigines. Do not forget about the ones who have taught everyone the soil, the land, the water, the air, our animals, our species. And be mindful that every decision moving forward, all people on our land are responsible for helping and assisting in repairing our people because we are under colonization still to this day. No one understands what our colonization looks like because they've never experienced it. We're not black people. We're not African Americans. We're not from Africa.
Thank you. And that exhausts our list of registered speakers. We will now take comments from those in chambers. If there's anyone wishing to address in chambers that would like to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, up in the Hill District, up at the top of Beffert and Roberts. Red alert, there's a lady that catches the bus as I walk the kids to school, and she says that people are going through the stop sign at Roberts and Beffert. Even your police, she says, throats flies through. I'm saying this because the kids will be soon out of school, and that, they run across the street, so you're going to find out some may get killed. I'm sort of shaken this morning, and the reason why, I'm looking at our council. While you are on the phone, I mean, you're on TV speaking, you had Mr. Burgess, he's doing his cellphone, I guess he's checking his messages, you too, Mr. Lavelle, you was on there too, Ms. Strasburg, and even you, Bobby Wilson. So you got them doing, I had said years ago, they were to leave their cellphones back in the office, but they bring them and then you're talking, and I'm sitting here watching. And it's upsetting me because I'm coming down here every day. Plus, when I listen to Bruce Kraus, you always make him first, and he got to run his mouth about a half an hour. This is what Bruce says, "By creating this commission," and I'm going, let's go like this, "By creating this commission, the City of Pittsburgh will continue to be a welcoming place for all persons of goodwill, regardless of race and so on color." When I come here, I don't get goodwill, so you're supposed to give me goodwill too, Mr. Kraus. And you can put your head down because you know when you ask me to find you a lover, I must be awfully good. And I'll say it again. No, you, yes, he asked me to find him a lover.
Please stick to this.
But he's, he's, you let him speak a whole half an hour. We get three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Chris, shut the mic. Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council?
Go ahead, come on now. It's not a police state.
Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next order of business. And I'm just going to say again, we have rules of council for commenting.
It's just, Madam President, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam President. It's just out of hand.
Councilman Burgess, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1582, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with Bloomfield Development Corporation licensee to provide a license, ownership, and maintenance agreement for jointly sponsored asphalt art on Friendship Avenue. Bill 1583, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements on certain properties in the 19th ward of the city in order to advance the Mount Washington Landslide Remediation Project. Costs for these temporary easements shall not exceed $2,875. Bill 1584, Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to accept a donation from the URA of Pittsburgh in the amount of $200,000 for ferrywood park and playground improvements. Bill 1585, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a Move-In Violation Received by an Environmental Services Driver for Being Overweight on a Controlled Road in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,587.50.
Madam President, Madam Clerk, I just got communication through the administration that there's a desire to see the waiver of rules on Bill 1585, that it may appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda, so I'll offer that up as a, oh, this afternoon, yeah, of course. So I'll offer that up as a motion.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill appear on today's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1586, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Marshall Dennehy, Warner Coleman, and Goggan for expert legal services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an amount not to exceed $17,951.85. Bill 1587, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Campbell Durant for expert legal services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an amount not to exceed $29,751.81. Bill 1588, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman, Thomas, and Battle for expert legal services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an amount not to exceed $21,967.41. Bill 1589, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McKinney and Chacote PC for legal services in connection with the police litigation matter for an amount not to exceed $5,478.15. And Bill Number 1590, Resolution Amending Resolution 731 of 2022, which authorized a 2023 fee schedule pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code by adding a maximum cap for zoning review fees.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1591, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement or agreements with Chevrolet for the sponsorship of pistons in the park. The city may receive up to $3,000 per year from this sponsorship. Bill 1592, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Green Gears for Waste Management Services in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Independence Day Festival at an amount not to exceed $11,300. Bill 1593, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, a license agreement or agreements with the University of Pittsburgh Department of Physical Therapy for implementation of the On the Move program at no cost to the city. The city will receive $1,000 in revenue for each site that participates in the program. Bill 1594, Resolution Amending Resolution 227 of 2023, authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Special Events to enter, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, into a professional services agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon, Inc., to provide management services for the Richard S. Collagery City of Pittsburgh Great Race in order to correct an error within the legislation to allow for the payment of $135,000 for prior year sponsorships. And Bill 1595, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 342 of 2022, which authorized the Mayor and the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, into an agreement or agreements with Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the city's operation of its senior community centers for the purpose of increasing the allocation amount by $2,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have three communications. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1596, Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, Submitting Fiscal Audit of the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Finance and Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh Tax Abatement and Tax Orumental Financing Program dated May 20, 2023. Bill 1597, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Requests on behalf of the Department of Public Works for John Menard per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018. And Bill 1604, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb, Submitting the City of Pittsburgh Capital Projects Accounting Close and Report dated May 30th, 2023.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Yes, Madam President. A motion to read, receive, file, 1596, 97, and 1604.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we'll move on to our next order of business, which is Committee for Final Action. Reports of Committee for Final Action. We'll start with Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1578, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for May 24, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1534, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of DeJoya Gray in the amount of $16,659.12 for professional services related to landslide evaluations.
Thank you. If you've heard the reading of the title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 1579, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for May 24, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1532, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a supplemental agreement or agreements with CDR McGuire, Inc., for project design management services and reviews in connection with various City of Pittsburgh projects to add funding for the preliminary engineering and final design phases, increasing the total not to exceed amount to $3,491,877.59, an increase of $334,608.98. And Bill 1533, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $500,000 to support the Equitable Tree Plan.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill haven't received, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. They're finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1580, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for May 24, 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1536, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816 of 2015, effective December 18, 2015, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and a 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program, and Approving the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Habitat for Humanity, Increasing East End Cooperative Ministry, and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement. And Bill Number 1538, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2023. Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capitol Budget and a 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program so as to identify specific projects in City Council District 9 and authorizing subsequent agreements.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President. Yeah, I defer to the Councilman.
So I believe, and I just wanted to double check, I believe 2023 1538 is the normal bill that comes from the young people who oversee my distribution of my UO. The way that the city does it is I get a group of students around the, around my district and they, they decide both the amounts and the projects. I believe that's what that is. Am I right about that? But the other bill, 1536, which re, which reallocates money for my future years, I did not participate in any conversation about that. So I'd like to, I'd like to refer it back to committee to have a conversation. I just don't, I don't know anything about it.
Motion to recommit. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on today's Standing Committee Agenda. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Did we vote?
No, we didn't vote yet.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. That's on the recommit and the other bill. Just the one bill.
We voted to recommit it first.
Okay, just want to make sure I can't remember.
It's the one bill.
And our last committee of the day is Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1581, Reported a Committee on Innovation Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for May 24 of 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1535, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 270 of 2020, which authorized an agreement with Warkeva, Inc., to provide a subscription-based budget publishing software solution for four years by increasing the approved 2023 amount by $2,164.33 for a new total cost not to exceed $169,300.33.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no when the clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Thank you.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. And just to be clear, just to make sure I'm clear, that on, under Councilman Wilson's committee, we made a motion to approve Bill 1538 and to recommit Bill 1330, 1536. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure the public knows what we did.
Yes.
Okay. And with that said, we'll move on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements this afternoon. Council will hold this, our Standing Committee's meeting at 1:30 PM. Speaker registration will close at 12:30 PM. To register to speak during these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And on Thursday, June 1st, at 10:00 AM, council will hold a, hold pre-event agenda interviews for the Disruptive Properties Appeal Board, the Housing Authority Board of Directors, and the Commission on Human Relations. So that's Thursday at 10:00 AM. And is there anything from members? Councilman Kraus, then Councilwoman Strasburger.
So, Madam President, I would like to think that my parents raised a gentleman. And I don't like, I don't like not behaving as one. Having said that, public comment is just beginning to work my last nerve. The, this, this is not, this is not an arena for anyone to come in and make wildly, grossly inappropriate and unfounded aspersions about council members' personal lives. Period. That, that, I'm done. So I, you know, I believe that we had already created an avenue by which we can cut that mic publicly. If not, I'm just, for the public's understanding and edification, I will begin necessary processes that if, when, and as speakers come in and clearly cross the line, we have the, the ability to non-confrontationally simply cut the mic. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just, I'm going to respond to that because I want you to know that we are working on new mics for this, for this room and that we'll have that ability to shut them, to stop the mic. And so they think that that will, that should help a lot. They've had that technology for school districts for many, many years. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I wanted to comment on that topic as well. It's certainly the public's right, you know, anyone who lives in the city of Pittsburgh to come down and comment during public comment, city council meetings. And that being said, when the comments cross the line to personal attacks, especially on the basis of sexual orientation, gender expression, and identity, race, it, it does cross the line. And it's my prerogative to stop listening to that. And I am going to stop listening. I will turn my back on you and I will walk out the door if I need to, if you attack my colleagues personally, especially on those bases. And I wanted, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Kraus that we need to do whatever we can to set the tone for public comment that is certainly critical. I mean, Lord knows, we're council members. We take criticism every single minute of the day. We can take criticism. We can take constructive criticism. But when it crosses the line, we have the prerogative to stop listening and to set the tone for this chamber. And that's what I will do. Thank you.
Anything else from other, any other members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse any absent members? Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. We have no absent members.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.